Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Tuesday, November 17th, 2020. We have a meeting announcement. Council will continue to meet virtually on Tuesdays and Wednesdays at 10:00 a.m. until further notice. All meetings will be livestreamed on the City Channel's YouTube channel. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Here.
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Here.
Nine members present.
Thank you. As we are joined from our remote locations, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and remain for a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. Our next order of business is proclamations. We have one to be read into the record from myself for Veterans Day. Madam Clerk.
Council President presents Bill Number 910. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby commend the Federation of War Veterans Societies, Inc., for their continued dedication to all of our veterans, and be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Wednesday, November 11th, 2020, to be the Federation of War Veterans Society's Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Can we have a motion to approve in a second? Motion to approve.
To move.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Disposed, proclamations approved. Our next order of business is the Will of Council from Councilman O'Connor. It's Councilman O'Connor.
Councilman.
Sorry.
Councilman O'Connor presents 911. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh encourages local medical, healthcare, scientific, academic, and pharmaceutical institutions to explore collaboration with their Cuban counterparts in knowledge transfer and joint collaboration in public health prevention methods, methods for preventing infection of health workers, innovative treatments, development of new treatments, vaccines, and protocols between Pittsburgh and Cuban institutions, and be it further resolved that this council appeals to the Pennsylvania General Assembly and government to actively pursue such exchanges, knowledge transfers, and collaboration, and further appeals to the federal government to do likewise while restoring diplomatic relations with Cuba, ending the decades-long economic blockade and engaging in all mutually beneficial areas of human endeavor.
Uh, motion approved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Councilman O'Connor.
Uh, that, that just was something that came up from actually former council member, uh, Burlow, who's been involved with our connections, uh, with Cuba for years with the City of Pittsburgh. I know, I believe, uh, Council President, they used to have a boxing match, um, that I think you were involved in with, uh, some people in the West End with the boxing crews out there, as well as in Brookline, actually with Councilman Coghill. So, uh, this is just something that they wanted us to do to show some solidarity, and I just want to thank everybody for being supportive.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other members? Okay, so now we'll move on to our next order of business. Thank you, Councilman. Move on to our next order of business, and that is, um, public comment. And I just wanted to, um, remind our speaker that everyone that, uh, that then everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern and official action or deliberation, which are or may be before City Council. Profanity is not permitted. May we have the first speaker, please? And the first speaker is Ikuhana Helle McKenna. Ikuhana?
Greetings of peace, light, and love.
Good morning.
My title is Ikuhana Helle McKenna, of the Grand Inca, the Aroqua Confederacy, of Aboriginal American people. It is our duty to revitalize our culture, our heritage, and our rich traditions, to restore our sacred places. Through the doctrine of discovery, a lot of our land was taken through the Indian Removal Act in 1830, under the leadership of Andrew Jackson, which at the time was the president of the corporation known as the United States. Killed many of our people through the Scout Act. The Homestead Act in 1862 also took a lot of indigenous land, acres, thousands of acres of Aboriginal indigenous land, just given away at their leisure. This will be a reminder that justice delayed is justice denied. Whereas, the Aboriginal American people shall fully exercise our indefensible inherent rights through various acts and deeds, but not limited to the revitalization of our culture. Whereas, we the people shall revise, enhance, and ensure equity and liberty to indigenous American people. Whereas, we shall restore and establish the quality of life through our ancestral culture, sustainable practices, and actions and deeds. It is our goal and duty to restore balance to the earth, to restore harmony, to restore unity. Whereas, we shall revitalize and reclaim our birthright, our land, and unite our people in the North, South, and Central America to include our beautiful island. Whereas, we shall continue to bring about harmony and love to our people and the earth. It is our mission to inform and empower all Aboriginal indigenous American people who have been mislabeled Negro, Black, Color, Afro-American, African-American, through various programs, acts, and deeds that are meaningful to our people, while at the same time being respectful to others. Whereas, the quality of life being essential to our people, we the people shall research and develop and implement sustainable technologies to ensure the survival and prosperity of our people. We would like to thank City Council and their members who have responded to our invitation to learn more about the Aboriginal indigenous people.
Thank you. Thank you for taking the time to come before City Council. Our next order of business is presentation of papers. Uh, Councilman, Reverend Burgess, Chair of Urban Recreation.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number 898, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation to Execute Relevant Agreement to Receive Grant Funding from the Digital Harbor Foundation by way of the National Science Foundation to participate in a multi-city effort to improve technology and technology-related educational programming. This grant will support the city's Rec. to Tech Initiative and will focus on building curriculum and tech improvements at two city recreation centers over three years. This resolution further provides for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed $345,182. Bill Number 912, Resolution Electing Under the Pennsylvania Liquor Code 47 to Extend the Timeframe for City Council to Render a Decision on Council Bill 2020-0779, entitled, "Resolution Requesting the Approval of an Intermunicipal Transfer of Liquor License to the Applicant Cabaret LLC for the Premises Located at 7928 Frankstown Avenue, Known as the Cabaret LLC pursuant to amended Pennsylvania Liquor Code 4-461."
Madam President, I want to make a motion on Bill 0912 to simply read, receive, and file.
Okay, we have a motion. Can we have a second?
I
Any discussion?
I don't have the bill.
I'm sorry, it's in, um, it's in the re, it's in the, it's in the new, it's in the newer. Basically, I'm extending the amount of time to negotiate with the owner of the cabaret and the community so that they can get comfortability of her receiving liquor license. That's all it does.
I don't understand why we're doing it now, though.
Because if not, it becomes an automatic approval.
No, no, I understand that. In, in terms of this portion of the meeting, why are we undertaking this?
It can be later, it can be under unfinished business. You prefer doing it under unfinished business? Ms. Kraus?
No, since I'm already here, let's just do it. Since I'm already here.
I'm not, I'm not voting on something I'm not seeing.
Okay, but you can abstain.
Whatever.
I believe Louise sent out a newer copy of the agenda.
Yeah, I, I just sent it to your Gmail address, Council President, uh, Councilman Cruz. I just sent it to your
Reverend, do you care if we take time to do it to the end of the meeting, then?
It doesn't matter. Yes, I, we want to accommodate, we want, we always want to accommodate, Councilman, who are any councilmen, so they know what they're voting. I think he's right.
Right.
So I'll wait and come back to it, okay, Ms. Kraus?
Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend. Okay, Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works.
Madam President, thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
There's no new papers.
No new papers, Madam President.
Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, Councilman Kraus, Chair of Human Resources.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 899, Resolution Authorizing Pursuant to Chapter 210 of the City Code, the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to Accept a Donation from the Pittsburgh Penguins Foundation of $50,000 for capital investments for the AMIN Recreation Center Rec. to Tech Remodel. Uh, Bill Number 900, Resolution Authorizing Pursuant to 210 of the City Code, the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to Accept a Donation for the First National Bank Corporation, $50,000 for capital investment for the AMIN Recreation Center Rec. to Tech Remodel. Bill Number 901, Ordinance Amendment and Supplement in the City Code of Title I, Administrative Article 11, Human Resources, Chapter 198, Campaign Finance Regulations at Sections 19801, Definitions in 19805, Public Database and Reporting. Bill Number 902, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Office of Management and Budget on behalf of the city are hereby authorized to enter into a grant agreement with the Allegheny County for the receipt of coronavirus relief funds in the amount of $50,000 for the bureaus of emergency medical services and fire. These grant funds shall be used to reimburse eligible city expenditures related to the COVID-19 response as set by county and federal guidelines.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman O'Connor, Chair of Public Safety Services.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 903, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 765 of 2016, which authorizes the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to enter into a five-year professional services agreement with one or more vendors for the continued implementation of the city's FAE and neuter in order to increase the not-to-exceed cost of $40,000.
Thank you. Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Strasburger presents Bill Number 904, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to Enter into a Fellowship Participation Agreement and/or Agreement with Coro Pittsburgh Public Allies Site. Bill Number 905, Resolution Amending Resolution 348, which authorizes the Mayor and Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into a three-year contract agreement with S3, granting uncapped citywide access to S3's products for all departments by amending the not-to-exceed amount to include data migration by $300,000. Bill Number 906, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to Enter into a Professional Services Agreement with ERP One Consultant, Inc., for a term of three years plus two one-year options for the provision of day-to-day managed services of the city's JDE Edwards Enterprise 1 9.2 application, currently managed by the Allegheny County Service Center, at a cost not to exceed $650,000 over five years. Bill Number 907, Resolution Authorizing the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to Enter into an Agreement, including a non-disclosure agreement with Mobility Impact Partners LP, to engage in strategic market and technical dialogue about mobility and energy concerns. Bill Number 908, Resolution Amending 840 of 2015, entitled, "A Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Parks to Enter into an Agreement with Applied for Technology LLC in Order to License Film and Event Planning Software and to Purchase Maintenance and Solutions for Port Services at a Cost Not to Exceed $31,405 in Order to Clarify the Start Date of the Contract as Implementation Date of the Services Rather Than the Commencement Date of the Contract and Reflect Changes to Funding Sources."
Thank you. And Councilwoman, Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Good morning. And myself, uh, I have one communication for a performance audit for IMP. Madam Clerk.
Council President Kelsmith presents Bill Number 909, Communication Fund City Controller Michael Lamb, Submitting a Performance Audit of the Department of Innovation and Performance, dated November 2020.
Thank you. Motion to read, receive, and file?
To move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion? Thank you, everyone. Approved. And we'll move on to the next order of business, which is Reports of Committee for Final Action.
Madam, Madam President, I think we can take this up under unfinished business before final actions. If you're comfortable, Councilman Kraus.
Francis. Yes, thank you.
I think, I, I'd like to make a motion for a Bill Number 2020, uh, I could get to it, 0912, to read, receive, and file.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any discussion? Okay. The motion's approved. And then now we'll move on to the Reports of Committee for Final Action. Councilman Daniel Lavelle, Committee on Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 895, Report of the Committee on Finance and Law for November 10, 2020, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 862, Resolution Transferring $3,000 from City Council to the City Clerk's Office. Bill Number 863, Ordinance Amendment Ordinance Number 25 of 2020, effective July 31st, 2020, Title Ordinance Supplement in the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances, Title II, fiscal Article V, Special Fund, to add a new chapter 237, Stop the Violence Fund, to prioritize the prevention of violence and crime within communities, and create a budgetary obligation for the fund by charge, by changing language. Bill Number 864, Ordinance Supplement in the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances, Title I, Administrative Article III, Organization, Chapter 116, Department of Public Safety by adding a new section, 116.15, Office of Community Services and Violence Prevention. Bill Number 865, Ordinance Supplement in the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances, Title I, Administrative Article III, Organization, Chapter 113, Office of the Mayor by adding a new subsection 11306, Office of Community Health and Safety.
You've heard the reading in the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, um, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor, the passage will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill. Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. And now we'll move on to Councilman Coghill, Anthony Coghill, Committee on Public Works.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 896, Report of the Committee on Public Works for November 10, 2020, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 854, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 192 of 2020, authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to Enter on behalf of the city into an amendment to the second amended full requirement service agreement with Direct Energy Business LLC for the continued supply of electricity to the city's buildings and facilities in connection with the city's aggregated purchase of electricity with other members of the Western Pennsylvania Energy Consortium. Bill Number 855, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to Enter on behalf of the city into an amendment, into an amendment to the purchasing agreement with the Snyder Brothers, Inc., for the continued supply of natural gas to the city's buildings and facilities, and extended the term of current purchasing agreement for two years until December 2024. The city plans to, to soon develop a competitive solicitation for procurement of natural gas purchases in 2025 and beyond. Bill Number 856, Resolution Vacating a Portion of Benchway, Formerly Stacked Alley, laid out in the eastern edition of New Homestead Plan of Lots, Plan Book Volume 20, Pages 12 and 13 in the 31st Ward, 5th Council District of the city. Bill Number 857, Resolution Granting unto 1700 Partners LLC, Their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct and maintain that their use in their own costs and expense to install a new projecting sign at 1607 East Carson Street in the 17th Ward, 3rd Council District. Bill Number 858, Resolution Granting unto Jonathan Ressler, Their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own costs and expense to install a new projecting sign at 2777 East Carson Street in the 16th Ward, 3rd Council District.
Motion to approve.
You've heard the reading of the title of bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? So I'm just going to mention that I'm going to abstain from, um, the bill for, I think it's, um, 0855, extending the, um, term of the current purchasing agreement for two years until December 2024. So I'll abstain from that one. Um, oh, uh, I'm sorry, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor, the passage of the bill, vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
I don't know, bills except for 0855.
You're abstaining, you're a no vote on 855?
Voting no.
On Bill 855, eyes eight one, no. All other bills, eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. I do want to just mention during the Public Works Committee that, um, Director Gable will have, we'll make a few comments afterwards on emotions and resolutions about his retirement. And then we'll move on to Councilman Bobby Wilson, Committee on Land Use and Economic Development.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 897, Report of the Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for November 10, 2020, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 861, Resolution Providing for the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Michael Baker International, Inc., in an Amount of $14,469 for Rendering a NOS Monitoring Training and Report Preparation in Response to a Complaint filed under 91702, Zone and Ordinance, and Providing for the Payment of Costs Thereof.
You've heard the reading in the title of bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor, the passage will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. And that moves us on to motions and resolutions, and we have a few meeting announcements. Immediately following this, this meeting today at 12 noon, council will hold an, an overview and policy discussion on the 2021 budget. This will be chaired by Councilman Daniel Lavelle. Tomorrow, Wednesday, November 18th, at 10:00 a.m., council will meet for a standing committee's meeting. To register to speak, please call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138 by 9:00 a.m. Wednesday morning. You may also submit comments by emailing cityclerks@cityclerksoffice@pittsburghpa.gov. Also, tomorrow afternoon at 1:30 p.m., council's Department of Budget hearings will begin with the Office of Management and Budget, chaired by Councilman Lavelle. Budget hearings will continue Thursday, November 19th, with Public Safety at Service, Public Safety at 10:00 a.m., chaired by Councilman O'Connor, and Permits, Licenses, and Inspections at 1:30 p.m., chaired by Councilman Wilson. Sounds like people need to tune in on Thursday. Budget hearings will be streamed live via City Channel, you see the City Channel Pittsburgh on YouTube. And as an early reminder, due to the Thanksgiving holiday next week, council will hold both the regular meetings and standing committees meetings on Monday, November 23rd, at 10:00 a.m. and 1:30 p.m., respectively. Do we have anything from the members?
Yeah, I'll join in if I can. Let our Chair of Public Works go first, and then I'll follow him, okay? Thank you.
Does he, thank you, Councilman. Councilman Coghill?
Thank you, Councilman Kraus. Yes, I just wanted to, uh, you know, comment on Director Gable. I had a feeling that, uh, you know, he, he may be retiring, and it's really a big loss to the city. I really felt, of all the departments, I look at the departments as really their own businesses, but I really thought he had a grasp on what he was doing. He's been there for years and years. Uh, you know, when I called him, he was, you know, right on it, no matter what it was. You know, he was honest with me of things that they couldn't do, and, you know, he made sure things that I asked that got done, that, that did get done. So, so a big loss. I just wanted to say, you know, I'll miss him. He was, uh, really, really good to work with on my part. And Councilman Kraus and Madam President, I hope we can break ground for the Fourth Division before he departs because he was on, you know, seeing it. I love his, his phrase for it is a campus because, you know, we have Public Works, we have EMT there, and I, and I love that word for it. It's going to be a beautiful facility. I just hope he's there to, uh, join in. And Councilman Kraus, I know you wanted to do it before the end of the year, and I'm all for that now in light of, uh, you know, Director Gable's retirement.
Nice. Thank you.
Thanks, and, uh, you know, appreciate his services. Want to let him know that.
Let's, um, thank you, Madam President. Um, and, uh, Councilman, thank you. Let's, let's set up a, a phone call with the administration. Let's, okay. Um, yeah, I, I, I just, you know, when I think of Mike Gable, the word gentleman comes to mind, you know, and, uh, I've been here now, I, I, I think I'm in my 13th year now, and it's been nothing but a pleasure working with him, um, every step of the way. Just the consummate professional, um, and, um, so, you know, the call never goes unreturned, the email never goes unanswered, the difficult problem or question never goes unresolved, and, um, um, he's a gem, and, uh, we'll miss him greatly. And Mike, I, I just, I wish you nothing but the best, um, in, uh, in whatever you choose to do from this point on. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other members?
Madam President, may I?
Yes, please, please just say it because I can't see everyone.
I know, I'm, I'm, my screen's the same way. I appreciate it. Um, so I am lucky to count, um, Mr. Gable as one of my constituents, but I have the same experience with other council members that it, it's so, um, wonderful for us and for our constituents that he's always so immediately responsive, right? And so I think one of our best departments is Environmental Services. I get the fewest complaints, you know, say what you will about austerity across the city budget and how across the city budget and how we struggle with resources so many times, but thank goodness the garbage gets picked up, right? If at least we have that. And I was just recalling this year especially, this construction season, we had a nice long construction season with favorable weather, and I, I feel like there were a dozen times that I said thank you to DPW on my social media for the wonderful projects they completed this year. Um, and so I just wanted to thank, especially in the parks. So, so, and, and I think a lot of council districts, so many playgrounds, so many basketball, um, you know, courts, so many baseball fields. It's really wonderful that he's had a, the, the DPW as a whole's had a really wonderful year, and I'm glad we had a favorable construction season. Um, but he's faced a lot of hard times because it's not always favorable weather, and there's snowstorms and landslides and all kinds of things. And, uh, I just want to say thanks, Mike, for always being there.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other members? Okay.
Councilwoman, if, or Council President, if anyone else is going to ju, uh, join in, I just want to echo, uh, Councilwoman Gross's remarks about, um, environmental services. Uh, when I first came in, I had the pleasure to chair the Public Works Committee, uh, and went down to meet with them at, I think it was like four-thirty in the morning, and I rode with them. I got to tell you, they rock. They simply rock. And, you know, as baseline as that is, you know, governments are formed for baseline procedures, and one of them is to make sure the garbage gets picked up. And men, the, the men and women of environmental services, they, uh, they do it better than anybody. Just had to say that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other members? So I'm going to say that I want to also thank Director Gable. He, I actually worked with, um, Public Works. It was one of the first departments I worked with as a community person. When I ran an athletic association, we had to have fields taken care of, and you don't realize how important that is and how many times people push for those, um, those maintenance, uh, the maintenance that he's done in those fields, and it really takes care of a lot of kids in the community. So you get to know people in Public Works pretty quickly, and I, I got to learn of Director Gable as somebody who was really good with the paperwork, really good with crunching numbers, really good with doing things. And he really did save the department some money, and he really did do a lot in terms of making sure that he was, um, you know, that he was accessible to all of us as he became the director. And for me, I was, um, friends with the previous director and, and assistant director, and I thought it was going to be a real challenge to get to know and get to work with Director Gable on a different level. And he was very kind. He was always very responsive. Um, you know, and these, these are the, the people were losing so much institutional knowledge as, as he and some of the others moved on. Um, they got us through Act Forty-Seven, and, um, our parks were amazing during that time. And, and environmental services, one of the best things that we know that we have. But they've also maintained our pools and kept pools open. They've kept ball fields, you know, um, real, in great condition. And they've filled potholes and paved streets and put up signage and did all that until, you know, some of that splattered off into domed. But during, um, some of the most difficult times, they kept the city moving. And I just want to thank him for his service during those years, even when he was, before he was director, um, but even after he was director, for being so responsive to the city of Pittsburgh. And I wish him a, a lot of good luck, and, and I wish him well, and I hope that he enjoys a lot of days of fishing, because I know he really enjoys in doing that. So I wish him, him and his family, uh, a well-deserved, uh, break, and thank him for his service. With that said, um, can we have a motion to excuse the absent members and a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting? We didn't have any absent members.
Uh, so moved. Brief question.
Yeah.
Uh, Madam Clerk, are we reassembling then at noon, or are we going directly into the budget overview?
We will have to, because it's a twelve o'clock scheduled meeting. We'll have to go back out and come back in and tour. We do need a quarrel, and you will have to check the, um, I'll send the information back out because it's a different login and passcode. You'll have to actually end this meeting, and we'll go back with a whole nother meeting. So check for a new login passcode. I'll email that back out after this.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. And I want to thank the clerk's office and, um, IMP in the City Channel folks, uh, David and them, for everything that they're doing to keep these meetings. It's so challenging, and they're doing a great job. So I want to thank everyone. Um, with that said, can we have a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Aye. Thanks, everybody.
Meeting adjourned. Be safe, everyone.